All right, good evening and welcome to the May 21st meeting of the Hickory City Council. At this time, I would like to ask the Reverend Tamika Garrison, the Director of Faith and Community Relations at Carolina Carrington, to the podium for our invocation. I would ask that if you're able to stand, to please stand for the invocation and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Garrison, thank you for being here this evening.
It's good to be here, thank you. Let us pray. God, as we pause in your presence, we give you gratitude for this place. We know that though we may call you by different names, we come to you humbly, understanding that we are all the same in the human spirit. We ask that you give safety and give support to those that have been elected, empower them in this position that has been given to them by the people of this city. And both, give them the responsibility and the awareness to hear the voices of the people who've elected them. God, in your presence, humble us. Humble us to know that we are here commissioned to a greater call, and that is to serve this world, this community, starting here in this place. Remind us of our blessings and let us be a blessing throughout this community. It's all these things that we ask. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have a very special presentation, and we'll have another recognition after that. So, at this time, I would like to ask Steve Miller and Sean Pennell up to the podium, and any other public services coworkers that may be here this evening. We've got a special proclamation that I want to read here and present them with. I just want to say that all of our city coworkers are special to us, and we appreciate the job that everyone does in the city of Hickory each and every day. But this just happens to be a recognition for our Public Works Week and for our public services coworkers. And for those of you that are here, and I know that there's many that couldn't be here, and public services coworkers work 24/7, they're always on-call, and they are vital to all that we do here in the city. And a lot of times, the work that they do may go unnoticed, but as soon as the work that they're responsible for quits working, then everybody notices it right away. So, I do want to say on behalf of the council and our citizens how much we appreciate the job that you do each and every day, even though I'm sure that we don't tell you enough how much we appreciate the job you do. This is National American Public Works Week, and I have a proclamation here that I would like to read on behalf of that. It says, "Whereas public works provides services in our community and are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas public works staff are essential workers to ensure the smooth and continued operation of any municipality, and whereas the support of understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I Hank Gess, Mayor of the City of Hickory, on behalf of the Hickory City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through the 24th, 2024, as National American Public Works Week in the City of Hickory, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public work services, and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life." So, I'm going to present this to Steve Miller, on behalf of all the public works coworkers. Thank you, Steve, thank you, Sean, and thank you each and every one. All right, Sean was just up there as a part of that crew, and probably some of you, those of you that work here know it, but maybe some of you don't know, he has announced his retirement. He only has a few more days. I'm sure he can tell us specifically how many days he has left to make his 30-year. He's had a 30-year career here at the City of Hickory. He's the Public Utilities Director at the current time for at least a few more days. And on behalf of the council and personally for myself, I just want to say thank you to him and his family, his wife Andrea's here, and the rest of his family. I'm sure I'll let him introduce those folks that are here with him. But we want to say publicly how much we appreciate your loyal and dedicated service over the past 30 years. And if there's any way we, I've already talked to his wife, and she said no, but we're still, if we can talk him into staying, we would certainly do that, but she's smiling, and I don't think that that's going to work. So, Sean, we really do appreciate all that you've done, and we hate to see you go, but I know that you've got another chapter in your life. You certainly have got a supportive family that's here with you, and I understand that you've probably, like the rest of us, you've got a list that probably continues to develop as we're speaking, but we're going to miss you around here, and you're welcome back here anytime, sir.
Yeah, I'd like, do you want to introduce your family?
Yeah.
My wife Andrea, my oldest daughter Tegan, her husband Nelson, my youngest daughter Orianna, my mother Vicki Reed is my middle daughter, and her boyfriend is Tanner. He was a quarterback for AC.
I know, I was just telling you, he ran all over us a couple of years ago. In fact, we couldn't find out, figure out how to stop him. So, I'd like to say, you know, thank you to Sean, you know, I've worked with him since 1994. He's done a tremendous job, you know, he's managed $100 million worth of projects the last few years with the BioSalads facility, the Northeast Plant renovation, the construction of the Catawba wastewater treatment plant, Trivium Corporate Center, Riverwalk, Ridgeview Library, and that's in addition to all the things that he does every day, running a utility department that serves 120,000 people in the Catawba Valley. So, you know, Sean took over this role a few years ago. Kevin Greer passed away, and, you know, I asked Sean if he would take over, you know, what, you know, the operation there, and one of the things that's always stuck with me, and only Sean could say it in such sincerity, and that, you know, Kevin wasn't supposed to die. And, you know, it's something that kind of sticks with you. He's right, he was not. But Sean didn't hesitate to step in, and I, you know, we were talking the other day, you know, you always want to leave a place better than what you found it. There wasn't anything broken necessarily, but I think we're in a better position today than we were even a few years ago, so that's a testament to Sean. And he came up through the organization. He wanted to retire last year and do some things for his family, and I begged him not to, so his family can blame me for not having him around the last year, but he agreed to do that. So, I'm, you know, proud of Sean, you know, proud of his friendship, and thank you for all you've done for the City of Hickory.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I want to say, I thoroughly enjoyed listening to your presentations and knowing what you have contributed to the City of Hickory. I just don't think people realize how easy their lives are because of people like you turn the water on. So, gosh, but you have certainly made a difference in this community, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're really going to miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I was joking with you that with all his historical knowledge, we may have to be calling every once in a while to get your expertise.
There'll be a couple people.
Okay, well, thank you so much, thank you so much.
I called him last night, and he was on, he was mowing his grass, I think. He was talking to me while he's mowing his grass. That's dedication right there, answer the phone, and you know it's me, and you're mowing the grass.
Yeah, I want to thank Sean for his patience with me. He quickly found out that I have an affinity for the details of things. I like to understand as much as I can about things, and he's been so patient and taught me so much, and I really appreciate that. Thank you so much, on top of everything that you've done.
Thank y'all. Yeah, and I just want to say that I appreciate the opportunity, you know, that you guys have given me and the trust you've given me. You know, Jill said something about, you know, turn the water on. You know, that's not me, that's, the guys are out there every day, you know, the guys in the ditch at midnight, soaking wet, cold, you know, those guys are the ones that I'll say run utilities, because they do, that's the bread and butter, the hard workers. The guys that are in the water plant, they, you know, they just give me what I need to do, and really the information you guys, but those are the guys that are in and out every day, you know, this is National Public Works Week, you know, so those guys are, you know, who I want to point out tonight that are really doing the work every day. Yeah, I mean, we get to build stuff and play like we're, you know, kids again, and it's fun, but they're the ones that are sweating out there every day, so I want to recognize them too. So, and thank y'all for, y'all for allowing me to participate in it.
And his day after retirement, he's running a 24-hour road race on foot.
He's already got the belt buckle.
And his wife running, and daughter running six hours.
Yeah.
So, you'll have plenty of time to train now.
It'll be fun.
It'll be fun.
It sounds like a lot of fun.
You can say Sean runs things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you again.
And y'all don't have to stay around.
All right, next on the agenda is persons requesting to be heard. At every councilman, at every council meeting, we allow persons who would like to address the council the ability to be able to do so. We provide a sign-up sheet at the, at the door, you don't have to sign up. We always allow anyone who maybe didn't get an opportunity or didn't know to sign up the opportunity to be able to address the council as well. We allow you up to three minutes to speak to the council. This is an opportunity for you to address us. We'll be more than happy to direct you, depending on what your concern may be, to the proper staff person, or we'll be able to get back with you at the appropriate time. This three minutes is for you to address us. We won't necessarily respond during that time, but we will follow up with you and address your concern once we've had an opportunity to review all the material. So, at this time, we have one person who has signed up to speak. Her name is Joellen Raver. If you would please approach the podium, and for the record, state your name and address, and then your three minutes will begin, Ms. Raver.
My name is Joellen Raver. I reside at 98 Third Avenue Southeast in apartment number 19 in Berkeley Falls, which is an apartment complex run by the Hickory HUD, HUD agency. And I wish to put it on record, I am making official complaint of elder emotional, mental, psychological abuse of tenants and employees, and gross neglect of services and living conditions, and mismanagement by Alonda Richardson. She is the director. And I have, for the record, given my full account to each of the members here on the council. And I want to add that I'm getting pressure from this woman. I know she needs to get into the apartments to see what's going on, and I had turned in my last complaint about, and they fixed everything. And then today, I get two men coming to the door wanting to get into my place, something about a bullet hole and some mildew. I didn't make another request. And so, and they wanted to come in and take pictures, they wanted me to sign some kind of paper. We have never been asked to sign anything around there other than our contract. And I feel that she is setting me up to a non-compliance thing, because I got an email back from her right after these guys went back to the, to their office, and she's saying that I'm non-compliant, they can't get in. I did not ask her to come back for anything else. She's wanting to get in there. There's other issues in my neighbors, I tried to get them to come down, I have sent pictures, I have seen the water issues. These people have been trying to get this taken care of for, well, the three years that I've been there, and I am one of the ones that had the water issues, but the rest of them didn't get their stuff. They've complained, and so I just really want to, you know, put that out there, that there's a problem, and I'd love everyone to kind of take, take a real heart thing, look at this, because it's very serious, I think, and there's other information coming to me that needs to be shared as well, but this is not the place for that. So, I don't know what else to.
Is that all, Mounds? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present that would like to address the council this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I know that we don't, we're not required to respond, but certainly I want to say thank you so very much for coming. Anytime someone comes to address the city council, and certainly the other parties not here to defend themselves, but anybody that comes saying that they feel like they've been psychologically, emotionally abused, I just want you to know that you've been heard, and thank you so very much for coming and sharing. Thank you.
Once again, is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening? All right, the next item on the agenda is our approval of the regular meeting of May the 7th, 2024. Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? All right, that carries unanimously. Next item is our reaffirmation ratification on second readings. Once again, I'll entertain a motion or discussion.
Move approval, second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? All right, that carries unanimously as well. Item number eight on the agenda is our consent agenda. I'll ask if there's anyone present on staff or council that would like to have any items removed from the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? All right, that carries unanimously as well. Next is public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. To introduce our first public hearing, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Gess, members of the city council, Mr. Swanson. First public hearing is consideration of voluntary contiguous annexation of 1.821 acres, located at 2326 12th Avenue Drive Northeast, owned by Terry Dean Holler, be presented by Planning Director Brian Fraser.
Good evening, Mayor Gess, members of council, Mr. Wood, Mr. Swanson. As Mr. Wood indicated, this is a voluntary and contiguous annexation. The ward is councilman severs. Current development is a single-family residence. There will be no future development besides the existing single-family residence, and as most of the time when I speak to you in this regard, the annexation is being sought to gain access to sanitary sewer. You can see the area in question in the red, Springs Road Northeast, McDonald Parkway, 12th Avenue Drive Northeast. You can see the city ETJ in the yellow, and in the blue is the city municipal boundary Here again, you can see the property. This is R1, R4, which is highest density, CC2, commercial corridor, and R3, medium density residential. Again, you can see the specific project site, again, Springs Road, McDonald Parkway, 12th Avenue Drive Northeast. So, the staff findings and recommendations, as you could read, the voluntary annexation petition, we believe complies with all applicable state annexation statutes. There are adequate public services currently available in sufficient quantities, and the annexation of the property, we believe, will not cause available public services to fall below acceptable levels. Based upon these findings, staff respectfully recommends approval of the requested annexation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Fraser? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, once again, this is a public hearing. We have some rules pertaining to public hearings. We ask that, first of all, we allow those that may be in opposition to this annexation, we allow them to go first, we allow up to 15 minutes, and then we'll allow those that are in favor the same amount of time, up to 15 minutes, to speak. If necessary, we will allow up to five minutes for rebuttal and surrebuttal. We just ask that everybody be respectful, whether you're speaking in opposition or whether you're speaking in favor, we just ask that you be respectful of the other person's views, and that you conduct yourself in a manner that you would be proud of if your mother was here. So, how's that? All right, at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open, and ask if there's anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this annexation you've just heard described by Mr. Fraser. All right, there being no one desiring to speak in opposition, I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. There being no one desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and entertain any discussion or motion from council. Move approval, second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? All right, that annexation carries unanimously. For our second public hearing, once again, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood, for the introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Gess. Second public hearing is consideration of an economic development agreement with Steel Warehouse of North Carolina LLC, as well as approval of the associated agreements with the North Carolina Department of Commerce and the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, and presented by Business and Community Development Manager Dave Leonetti.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Gess, members of council, Mr. Wood, Mr. Swanson. Tonight, we're here to have a discussion about an economic development project that's a pretty exciting redevelopment project in the eastern part of the city along the rail corridor. The company we're here to discuss is Steel Warehouse. They are the parent company to Steel, Steel Warehouse of North Carolina is the company that all these agreements are with, and then their parent company is a 75-year-old privately-held steel center, steel service center based in South Bend. They've got facilities across the US, Mexico, and Brazil. They process over 2 million tons of steel annually and employ about 2,500 folks. Their goal is to enhance their presence in the southeast, and especially the North Carolina market. They do a lot of supply to John Deere, Caterpillar, Bobcat, and they hope that this facility will enable them to better cater to the southeast region. So, to give a little bit of an idea of where we're talking about, the, so this is located along Highland Avenue, just east of McDonald Parkway. This is Cheryl Furniture here. So, the site is 27 acres approximately. It's the former Appalachian Hardwoods facility, so this would be a redevelopment of an existing building complex. There's multiple buildings on the site, about 50,000 of which, square feet of which, is ready to be repurposed. They're also planning a rail spur that would cross Highland Avenue. You can see the red line on the, on the map here that would cross Highland Avenue and create an at-grade rail crossing to enable them to truck, or to transport the steel, either the incoming steel for processing, and then after processing, transport that to the, to, via rail. And then they have enough space there, you can tell, there's a lot, especially on the north side of the property, there's enough space there for additional space, up to about 300,000 total square feet of space. So, in terms of investment and jobs, they're looking at a $27 million investment over this first five years, with approximately 58 jobs, and an average wage of roughly $59,500. That's above the county's average wage, which is right around $54,000. From a tax incentive standpoint, the agreement that you'll be discussing tonight would be a 50% grant of the tax base increase above what's currently there as of January 1st of this year for five years. The maximum incentive would be around $336,000. Incentives, it's important to note, are only paid after the property taxes are paid in full, and there are also additional clawbacks if the company does not meet their job and investment thresholds. There's also, Warren in the introduction mentioned, the North Carolina Department of Commerce, a building reuse grant, as I mentioned, this was an existing building. So, they are also, the state is awarding a $240,000 up to maximum for the creation, based on the creation of 30 jobs at $8,000 per job. The reason that number is lower is because the building reuse grant has a time threshold of two years, and we're looking at five years for the other, the other tax incentive agreement. So, that's why they're, they're planning on creating 30 jobs within the first two years of the project. This grant would be paid after the jobs are created and maintained for at least six months. There's a 5% match required, and we'll be splitting that with Catawba County, and that is satisfied by the fourth agreement in your packets tonight, which is a grant administration agreement with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, which they will assist with all of our grant reporting and administration requirements. So, with that, the staff recommendation is to conduct a, there's four items for consideration. The first is conducting the public hearing to approve the economic development agreement for the tax incentive piece. Then, there is a state agreement with, for the building reuse grant with the state of North Carolina through the Department of Commerce. Then, there is a city agreement related to the building reuse grant. That describes the timeline where we will pay out the grant funds. So, there's some different possibilities with the state grant, but the way the city has always done it is, we don't pay any funds out until jobs are created and maintained for the six months required by the grant. That way, there's no potential clawback, because no one would have requested, we, the city and the company would not have received any of the funds. That grant agreement, though, we would allow one partial payment if they create 15 jobs, we would, and maintain them for six months. We would pay out up to whatever they had created up to that point. Then the fourth is the aforementioned grant administration contract with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know that was.
I'm just wondering, keep track of the accounting of that, is that Western Piedmont's going to do that?
Yes, the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, they'll receive the, for the building reuse grant, they receive the North Carolina, the unemployment insurance, the NCUI 101 forms that show how many employees that they have, and it's based on, when the grant was announced by the state, how many folks that they had employed in the state of North Carolina, and then the increases after that grant announcement date.
Do you have an approximate timeline from inception to the finished product?
I don't, I believe they plan on getting up and running with the first phase as, more quickly, hopefully maybe towards the, within the next 12 months, I think.
I have a question. Is Highland Avenue, is that DOT maintained, or is that us?
That is a DOT. That is a DOT street.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Leonetti? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, Dave, could I get the clicker?
Yes, sir.
Well, once again, this is a public hearing, and we will allow anyone who would like to speak, whether it's in opposition or whether it's in favor, the opportunity to do that. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of this economic development agreement with Steel Warehouse that you've just heard described by Mr. Leonetti. There being no one desiring to speak in opposition, I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. There being no one desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask if there's a motion or discussion.
Move approval of economic development agreement.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? All right, that carries unanimously as well. All right, we have one departmental report this evening, so once again, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
So there were four items.
Do we, that, we gotta take four separate actions?
Yeah, can you put, you may wanna put that back up.
Put the, yeah, if you'll put, I'm sorry.
Can you put the four items back up there?
So does the motion and, and the?
There are four separate agreements.
So does that account for the first one?
Yes.
Okay.
Can he bundle the next three together?
That's fine.
Okay, so we'll, okay, let's do this. Item number two, three, and four, as you see on the screen, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve item two, three, and four. Item number one has already been approved.
That's fine.
Okay? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition saying? All right. Item two, three, and four carry unanimously as well. All right, thank you, sir. All right, now it's time for our departmental report, our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Gess. One staff department report tonight is related to the approval of a resolution opposing the Charlotte, City of Charlotte inter-basin transfer request to the N.
Wait for a minute.
NCDQ. So you're familiar with this issue. The jurisdictions in the region, the majority have adopted resolutions opposing the Charlotte request for an inter-basin transfer. So we're in the Catawba Water Re Water Basin. It's, it's not a huge water basin. The City of Charlotte is in two basins. They're in Catawba Water Re and the Yadkin PD, and also a sub-basin of the Rocky River Sub Basin. So Charlotte is not really split in half. It's split probably 66% of the Catawba and the rest in the, in the Yadkin PD. So they are requesting an inter-basin transfer to take water that they're currently taking out of the Catawba, and so they can continue to grow on the east side to put that water in the, in the Yadkin PD. So that's what we are opposing. Just some points of interest here. So they make the request to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. It's for 30, they currently have a 33 million gallon a day inter-basin transfer. They're asking for another 30 million gallons a day. That would put them at 63,000, 63 million gallons a day. And they also, a few years ago, you remember, there was the, we contested the Concord Canaplis IBT request, and they ended up getting 10 million. Well, that comes from Charlotte water. So, but it was requested by Concord Canaplis. So that, that would be 73 million gallons of water a day if this were approved. That would be coming out of the Catawba and not going back into the Catawba. And people think, well, we're upstream, it doesn't matter, and that's not the way it works. You know, all the lake levels are balanced by, Lake James and Lake Norman are the two biggest lakes. We're not, Lake Hickory's not necessarily one of the largest lakes, but all the water is balanced by Duke Energy as a system, and this really comes into play during drought periods, which we're not experiencing that right now, so we're kinda spoiled, but we remember the horrible droughts we had, you know, during our first IBT conversation. So, so they, the magnitude of this request, our whole region, so the jurisdictions that have water plants that take water out of the Catawba are Morganton, Valdez, Hickory, Granite Falls, and Lenore. So the amount of water that those five jurisdictions, five water plants draw out of the water to be treated is about what they're asking for in 30 million gallons. So that's, that's how large that number is compared to what our region uses. So our position is that, that either one of two things. The City of Charlotte should provide the financial means to take water out of the Yadkin and put it back in the Yadkin, but if it takes water out of the Catawba, they should make the investment, make sure the water goes back into the Catawba after it's treated, the wastewater side of it. So that's the financial piece of it. Or Mother Nature is telling them, well, you've reached your limit on growth because that takes the water from everybody else, particularly over time, it impacts everybody else. So every, all the other jurisdictions along the Catawba are subsidizing the City of Charlotte being able to continue to grow. And I know if you remember, last year, we approved our system development fees. Those are fees that jurisdictions, this is state law, this is, this is the way this works now. So state law requires if you have a system development fee, you have to go through a accounting slash environmental process to determine what your fees should be, and everybody sets theirs to, to accommodate for future growth. So as growth comes on, you're taking capacity away from the existing system. So you pay a system development fee to replace the capacity that you're consuming. And so those numbers to, to make the financial investment, you know, either building a new water plant, or expanding one, or pumping the water back, that should be built in to their system development fees. It'll do one of two things. It'll stop growth because the numbers are gonna be too high, or they'll throw a lot of money off that'll allow them to do something other than an IBT, because that's the easiest thing. That's the cheapest thing. I hope that makes, I mean, we've heard all this, and there's not much new with any of that. Just going back, so the City of Charlotte got their initial 33 million, and it's Charlotte Water now is the department that operates their water and sewer system, but the City of Charlotte got their initial 33 million gallon a day inter-basin transfer in 2002, and it really went under the radar. There wasn't a whole lot of discussion about it. And then Concord Canaplis came forward, they're asking for 36 million gallons a day out of the Catawba into the Rocky River Basin, which feeds into the Yadkin PD. And that was what the fight was about, and the settlement was for 10 million gallons a day. But that 10 million gallons comes from the City of Charlotte, but it's, the Concord Canaplis are tagged with it by the state. So that was a long process and a horrible drought. So when, during drought conditions, that really comes more into play because there's less water in the basin for everybody. And this is just some historic pictures of the Oxford Hydro Station, Oxford Dam being built, but I'd be glad to answer any questions. But there is, the item before you is a resolution opposing Charlotte's request for an inter-basin transfer. And we're on the front end of this process. They're in the data gathering, information gathering mode, and eventually the environmental, a commission of the Department of, the DEQ will decide the merits of their request. So that will go through the process, and they've got a number of things that they need to do. But we would join a list of folks in our region who've already adopted a resolution opposing that transfer.
Does this mean a lawsuit?
It depends.
It's premature, it's premature at this point.
Well, there'll be lawyer, I'm sure, I mean, I wouldn't, I'm not sure. I would think that that would be part of the process. That's, that's the way it worked last time.
Okay.
But I don't know, it just depends on factors that come into play.
Well, they're not just gonna read the resolution and say, oh, okay, that's fine.
I doubt it.
I doubt it. Okay.
Any other questions? All right, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the resolution to oppose the City of Charlotte inter-basin transfer request as been described by our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? All right, that resolution carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. All right, next on the agenda is appointment to boards of commissions. I'll ask if there's anyone present on council that would like to make any appointments this evening.
I would like to nominate Jacob Beaver as Caucasian representative on the Community Relations Council.
All right. Duly noted. Are there any other appointments this evening? All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? All right, he is officially 100% appointed. Next on the agenda is matters, not on the agenda, is there anything we need to add this evening?
No, sir.
No, okay, all right. General comments, I have just one this evening. I wanna say happy birthday to our fellow council lady, Ms. Charlotte Williams. Today is her birthday.
Thank you.
And instead of taking the evening off, she's here conducting duty and business, so thank you, and happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
Let's not sing.
I wouldn't sing.
He almost did.
Don't sing.
Oh, okay.
He almost sang to you.
All right, is there any other, is any other council members or staff have any comments I'd like to make?
You have your budget presented in front of you. We'll do the public hearing on that at your next meeting. If you have any questions, just let us know. The statute requires that we distribute copies to city council and the clerk before we call for the public hearing, so we've done that.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody?
I've got one more thing.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Tim reminded me, so I'll.
That's why we got him for.
I have my note right here, it was covered up, so, so we have Marlesia Walker, an LR student, interning for the legal department this summer, so welcome aboard, glad to have you. There she is, so she'll be under the tutelage of Ms. Dula there, and so we're glad to have, glad to have a local LR student joining the team this summer.
All right, welcome.
Marita was probably, my gosh, she's gonna forget, so.
I told her that, said we may forget.
Well, I was reminded, so welcome aboard.
All right. Anybody else? All right, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? Thank you for being here this evening. We stand adjourned.